Good evening. Welcome to the Coconino County Board of Supervisors special session, followed by a regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. I want to ask Eric Peterson, our Director of Public Affairs, to indicate to the public how they can ask a question or participate in public participation of our meeting now that I have called this meeting to order. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you Chairwoman. Good evening, everyone. If you wish to speak today during public comment or during any of our public hearings, you're going to utilize the Q and A function. You can either mark a note in there that you'd like to speak, and we will give you speaking privileges, or you can raise your hand. For those of you who are attendees, you will see Raise Your Hand at the bottom of your screen. If you are already a panelist and wish to raise your hand, simply click Participants, and you will see Raise Your Hand at the bottom of the participant panel. So again, if you are wishing to speak at Q and A, just post a comment in there, or raise your hand, and we'll have the Chairwoman call. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to just verify that we have which board members we have present today. We are expecting all of our board members. I'm Liz Archileta, the Chairwoman of the Board, and also the Representative for District Two. District, our Vice Chair Lena Fowler, District Five.
Madam Chair, I'm here.
Great, thank you. We have Supervisor Art Babett, District One.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. I've been having some audio trouble, but I am here. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and Supervisor of District Three, Matt Ryan?
I'm here, but I'm not seeing any control associated with my video, and I'm wondering if I'm in the right room associated with the Zoom webinar.
Okay, well, we'll check on that, and we may, we'll make a change if we need to on that. Thank you. And then we have Supervisor of District Four, Supervisor Jim Parks.
President, Madam Chair, I, I too have an issue. I'm in my car, but I will be at the office soon, and I'll get on my computer and have a little better feed. I hope you can hear me.
We can hear you. Yes, thank you. Okay, well, we have all members of the Board that are present. And so now, if you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Can, please do that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that. Now, this is an opportunity for a call to the public. This is the time when any member of the public who wishes to speak to the Board of Supervisors is able to do so. Please know, we will not be able to act upon what you are telling us, but we are happy to receive your input. And again, as Mr. Peterson had said, just please let us know that you wish to speak utilizing the different methods that he spoke about. I know that we did have one person indicate earlier today that they wish to speak. I'm not sure if that was during the special session at 5:00, or if it was at the 6:00 session, but if you are on now and you wish to speak, please let us know. Okay, Mr. Peterson, do you see anyone who has indicated that they wish to speak during public participation? I do see people either in chat or in the question answer who are here for specific agenda items, and we will call on them at that time. But in terms of just the general call to the public, is there anybody who wishes to speak at this time?
Madam Chair, I do not see any at this time.
Okay, thank you. Then I'm going to close the call to the public, and I'm going to go on to our next agenda item, which is the Board of Supervisors Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda is a new, is many items that are voted on in one motion. These are items that the Board of Supervisors has either had work sessions on or in the past, or are administrative in nature. And so is there any member of the Board who wishes to remove a consent agenda item for separate consideration? Okay, hearing none, then is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items, which are items one through seven?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion. This is Supervisor Ryan.
Thank you. The motion to approve was made by Supervisor Babett, seconded by Supervisor Ryan. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed to the motion, please say nay. Hearing none opposed, it passes unanimously. The next item is item number eight. We need to resolve as the Board of Equalization. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Supervisor Babett, seconded by Vice Chair Fowler. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed, it passes unanimously. We are now acting as the Board of Equalization, and this is, this is consideration and possible action to approve the Board of Equalization resolution. I will have asked that, we have Lindsay Daly, our clerk, speak to this item. And I also believe we have Attorney Howard Brown, who was with us this evening as well. And so, and so I'll turn it over to Lindsay first, and then turn it over to Howard for any comments.
Thank you, Chair Archileta, and good evening Supervisors. Each year, the Assessor's Office sends out notice of changes. This is after they send out the notice of value. And the notice of change is when a property owner either combines a parcel, splits a parcel, or has new construction. And so the notice of changes can be appealed with the Board of Equalization 25, 25 days after they received the notice. So this year, we only had two appeals that we received, and we did conduct the hearing on October 29th in person with our hearing officer, Chuck Johnson, who's here tonight, as well as Assessor staff. And the outcome of those hearings was one petitioner, Bonding Allen. The hearing officer issued a no change to the value of the property. And then the other petitioner, Darris Palmer, the hearing officer reduced the full cash value to $495,000. And we have to legally have these approved by November 20th. It falls on November 20th, the third Friday of November. And that's what I have.
Thank you very much, Clerk Daly, and thank you to Hearing Officer Johnson for joining us as well. Let me turn it over to Mr. Brown for any comments.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board of Supervisors. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. Your normal attorney had a conflict and reasons to not be here, and so I'm happy to step in and help in any way I can. I've reviewed a number of documents that were provided to me through Lindsay, including the minutes from the hearings that were held, Mr. Johnson's recommendation, the notices of decision, the staff report. And I've reviewed the Board's policies, including the scope of its review of the recommendation. So I'm more than happy to answer any questions if the Board would like. Otherwise, I did not see any irregularities in the process.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that review. Let me, let me see if there are any questions from board members, either for Clerk Daly, or for you, Mr. Brown, or the hearing officer, or Assessor's staff at this time. Board members, any questions? Hearing no questions, then we are at the point where we need to consider an action. Is there a, well, let me ask, is, are there any, is there any, are there any members of the public who are here that are this, that are the subjects of this particular item? Okay, well, seen none, then I'm going to bring it to the Board for an action.
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and help out here, if you want. Oh, I don't know. There's Supervisor Babett. He might want to do the motion.
I do not.
Oh, okay. Madam Chair, actually, after hearing our attorney's review about the process that was held accordingly, and Lindsay, Lindsay's presentation, and the documentation we also have in our files, I move that we approve the Board of Equalization Resolution 2020-03 to receive and accept the hearing officer's recommendations for petitions for review of real property valuation tax year 2021 hearings conducted October 29th, 2020.
I will second that motion.
Okay, thank you. There's a motion from Director Brian, seconded by Director Babett. Any discussion? Very well. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Okay, it passes unanimously. Thank you. We now need to have a motion to resolve as the Board of Supervisors. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Motion made by Director Babett, seconded by Director Fowler. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed, it passes unanimously. All right, thank you very much. We're now going to go on to our action items. We're at item number nine. This is consideration and possible action to approve Resolution 2020-80, approving a franchise agreement with UNS Gas, Inc., an Arizona Public Service Corporation that provides natural gas services in Coconino County. Deputy County Manager Andriani.
All right, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Board. Tonight is a consideration by the Board for approval of a franchise agreement with UNS Gas, our regional natural gas provider. This agreement would extend the current franchise agreement for another 25 years. We've had a, an existing franchise agreement for the past 25 years, and this would extend that agreement. You know, as we think about natural gas service, we've had a lot of conversation, collective conversation about what I would consider, you know, essential services or, you know, with COVID and, and certainly, natural gas is truly an essential service and is therefore managed by a public utility like UNS Gas and regulated in this state by the Arizona Corporation Commission. County has had a strong and positive relationship with UNS Gas for many, many years. They've been important partners with us as we've gone through various emergencies. Many will remember going through Schultz. We worked hand in hand with the gas company. They worked very closely with us on flood mitigation and other activities in, in the Timberline area. And we certainly worked very closely with them over the years on, on our road projects, as well as private development projects. They've always been a very good partner. As the county attorney recently shared with the Board, the Board's authority relative to this and other franchise agreements is lifted. However, staff did take this opportunity to clarify expectations involving times when it may be necessary for, for UNS Gas to conduct pavement cuts either during emergencies or otherwise. And we were able to insert some language into the agreement that recognizes the county's new engineering, design, and construction requirements, and also do it to recognize that we will require, you know, anyone that is involved with any operation with UNS Gas, that they work through their standards as well. So I appreciate that cooperation and being a clarification, you know, into, into this franchise agreement that was important to us and to the county. And the investments that we're making now in our roads with the 403 taxpayer dollars, it's important that we take every step we can to, to protect those taxpayer investments. So I appreciate their cooperation. I'd like to introduce that there are three representatives tonight with us for, with UNS Gas. Martin Anaya, our District Director, Jason, excuse me, Jason Garrett, the Flagstaff District Manager, and Adriana Martinez, the Local Affairs Representative. And they are all on as presenters if the Board were to have questions. At this time, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Martin and I to make a few comments, and then it'll come back to me to wrap it up and then turn it over to the Board for consideration. Thank you, Madam Chair. Martin?
Thank you, Lucinda. Good evening, Madam Chair, Supervisors. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. Like Lucinda said, I'm Martin and I am Director, UES Gas. And with me tonight, representing UES Gas are Adriana Martinez, our Government Affairs Representative, and Jason Garrett, our District Manager here in Flagstaff. And I echo Lucinda's comments and that we at UNS greatly appreciate and value the partnership, the longstanding partnership that we've had with the county. And I don't have much more to add to her words other than, you know, it's an honor to be here, and we look very forward to continuing our partnership going forward. And we're happy to answer any questions that anyone may have in regards to the franchise agreement.
All right, thank you, Martin. So with that, Madam Chair, staff would recommend approval of the franchise agreement, and I turn it over to the Board for consideration. Thank you.
Right, thank you so much, Deputy County Manager Andriani. And also, thank you to Mr. Anaya for joining us, as well as members of the team from, from Unisource who are here with us to be available to answer any questions. Let me ask if there are questions from the Board members at this time? Are there any questions, Board members? Do you have either for Lucinda or for the representatives from UNS? Okay, hearing no questions, then we'll go ahead and move to a motion. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2020-80, approving a franchise agreement with UNS Gas, Inc., an Arizona Public Service Corporation that provides natural gas services in Coconino County?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Motion by Supervisor Babett, seconded by Supervisor Parks. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay.
Madam Chair, mine is an aye as well.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. I hear, I heard no nays. Therefore, it passes unanimously. This item is approved. Thank you very much. We will now go on to item number 10. Item number 10 is consideration and possible action to approve Resolution 2020-71, expressing support of renaming the unincorporated area at the junction of the State Route 64 and US Highway 180 from Valley, or some may say Vaia, to Grand Canyon Junction. And we have Jay, who is going to present this item. Jay Christelman, Director of Community Development.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Thank you for that, and Supervisors. I am happy to introduce this, this, this case this evening. When the Clerk's Office said, "Thank you, Lindsay, for your help with this," was first contacted by Mr. Nathan Schott, who's the attorney for the process. We had to do some research because we weren't sure what to do with the name change. During that research, we identified that the USGS is actually the sole entity that handles the name change process. However, when I reached out to USGS, they did indicate that they welcome either a letter of support, or in our case this evening, a resolution from the local jurisdiction, in this case, the Board of Supervisors, supporting the process. So with that, I'll be happy to hand it over to the attorney, Mr. Nathan Schott.
Thank you.
This is Mike, Mike Mongini and Nathan Schott, Houghford and Horseman, 120 North Bieber Street, Flagstaff, Arizona. Madam Chair and Supervisors, we're coming to the Board just like Mr. Christelman has stated. We're trying to go through the process to get the, the name change. We represent a Grand Canyon Junction Coalition, which is a group of residents and stakeholders in the, the junction area. And they're concerned about the, the growth of their community. And just anecdotal, I was born and raised up here, and I always knew it as the Junction until I started representing Babett's, and they used to call it Valley. And I see it spelled Vaia. And so I think the name by itself has been confusing to people, but everybody knows it as the Junction. And I think the locals would prefer it. And Nathan Schott, he's been pioneering this thing forward. He'll make a presentation with regard to a summary of a survey that may not have made it in your packet. Nathan?
Thanks, Mike, and thank you, Madam Chair and Board of Supervisors. I did want to provide an update on the, the final survey results. In the board packet was some preliminary results of an online survey that, that we did report on. Those results, results are a couple of weeks old now. And that survey did close yesterday, and I just wanted to report that we had a total of 805 responses. Of those 805 responses, 630, I'm sorry, 693 of those respondents had indicated that they were in favor of the name change. 74 respondents were opposed to it, and 38 respondents indicated that they were still undecided. That's an 86% approval rate in that, in that online survey, which interestingly enough is identical to the preliminary results that we did report on, which was, at that point, two weeks ago, we had just about 500 survey responses. And also in that packet of information that we provided is, is some additional statistics on where the survey respondents identified that they were from. And we're, I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you may have on, on these final survey results, or anything else presented in that information packet. Also presented in that packet is all of the comments that we received. There are, there were hundreds of comments in support, and some, obviously, from individuals who were opposed. We thought that would be important that you guys had access to those comments so you could get an idea of what people were thinking. I would just kind of summarize the, the no answers just briefly. Like I said earlier, there were 74 individuals out of the 805 who responded who were opposed to the name change. And almost half of those were just opposed to the name change because they didn't like it. They, it was for historical reasons, they, they, the area has always been called Valley or Vaia, however you want to pronounce it. And the rest of the respondents were a little more across the board. Seven people indicated that they opposed the name because they knew it would spur development. And, and that's the sole reason why they opposed the name change. 10 people who respond, who were opposed to the name change said, provided no response, and then the remainder were kind of all over the place, and we couldn't really summarize them. But I guess with that, we're more than happy to answer any questions that anybody may have regarding this, this item. Anything else? No.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate the, the information and the work that has gone into this. Let me see if there are any questions from members of the Board. Board members? This will be either for, for Jay as staff, Mr. Christelman, or for the two representatives who just spoke. Are there any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Supervisor Babett.
So Nathan or Mike, if you could just explain a little bit, or Jay. So this is one step of this. What is the, what is the timing from your sense about taking it up to the next tier in terms of sign off on this if the Board were to move this forward with this resolution?
Yeah, I can, I can speak to that. So the next step in the process is to submit an application to the USGS. It's unclear exactly how long that process will take. They will solicit additional information from the federal agencies. We have begun work on our application, and we would like to submit a, a resolution in support. And then it would go to the Federal Board, the Federal USGS Board, who would do their independent research and their background, gather their background information. And then that Board meets quarterly. So I would anticipate it would, it may be first quarter next year, sometime before we would, before our application would be submitted or be considered by, by the Federal Board.
Okay. Great. I was interested in that, and I do have a, a comment, Madam Chair, but we'll let other Board members have the opportunity to ask question if they so desire.
Thank you. Thank you Supervisor Babett. Other members of the Board, do you have any questions? Either for Mr. Christelman, or Mr. Schott, or Mr. Mungini?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
I would like to ask Mr. Mungini and Mr. Sharp if, it seems to me, as I read through the comments, that a lot of the, the negative comments are from people that have lived there for many years. Did you address those folks as to why they were, why they were opposed to this? I see that many of the comments are just because they don't like it, but also because they're afraid that there will be some confusion and people will get to Val, it's now Valley, and be actually looking for the Grand Canyon, which is many miles away. Have you addressed those folks? Comments?
Supervisor Parks, I, I did call Cherry Lynn Blair because she lived up there her whole life and asked her what her thoughts were. She said, you know, she, she really liked just the old name. But she says that location actually is, was further north than the junction where it's at now. You know, where she said that the, the junction used to be for the railroad, to the depot. And she said she just likes the, the old name because she grew up there. But she says she doesn't care, ask her about the development idea. Some are saying the comments about the development. And on the development side, she says, you know, development's coming. It's already changed at the junction. So I told her about the, the numbers we're receiving back. And she said, I guess it'd just be some of us old timers would be nostalgic on, on the word Valley.
Yeah, that's true. I know Cherry Lynn. And I know, I know that the, the original location of the Valley Ranch was, was several miles from that junction. I, I was just curious as to, I know Brooks Cameron, he lives up there too. They have a ranch right near there. And I didn't see a comment by Brooks. Well, they're not, they're not indicated anyway that, who they are that made the comments. But anyway, I was wondering about just the old timers around there and what, what they felt about it. And I did, I did work for Babbitts. And I, I worked for Bill Howell when he had the lease on the place that Cherry Lynn owns there. And I've always kind of thought of it as Valley. And, and, but, you know, I don't have a dog in the fight. That's, I don't have a piece of property there. And so I was just curious as to what, what you had come up with, with the old timers around there.
Supervisor Parks, the Rob Baldowski, he, he's a local up there. Willie Collins, Thad Johnson, they're part of this coalition. There's, there's others. I just don't have all their names in front of me. But they, they were all, and I use removing this forward. I, I was also aware of, and we're all old enough to remember, West Sedona, when it was called Grasshopper Flats. And then it went to West Sedona. And all of us kept on calling it Grasshopper Flats. Even, believe it or not, even up, up to the current time. But when it got changed, it was, it really oriented people better to where they were at. Nobody knew what Grasshopper Flats was. I want to go to Grasshopper Flats. Nobody knew that. And I'd say the same thing as with Valley, unless you're here and you've heard Valley. A tourist doesn't know where Valley is. And I think that's a part of it.
That's true. And I know where Grasshopper Point is, but I don't know where Grasshopper Flat is either.
Yeah, it's West Sedona.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So, Mr. Mungini, so what, what is the history of the name Valley or Vaia?
Nathan will give, give a summary of it because he did the digging into the background of it. Nathan, please.
Yeah, and the history is, is, it is a little unclear. There, the first appearance of the name Valley or Vaia is a reference to a spur off the railroad near there. It, it is several miles to the west, I think a little bit to the north and west of where the actual junction is. But there was a railroad spur to what was called Valley Station. There was a bunkhouse there and railroad siding where they would load sheep. That area, as I'm sure you, you guys all know, is, was historically for sheep ranching area. And so there was a, a railroad spur and a bunkhouse. And that was Valley Station. That, that name goes back to around the turn of the century was when that railroad spur was, was constructed. In the early 30s, there was a, and I have some of this information in that background document. But around the, the 30s, there was a ranch called Valley Ranch that was in existence for approximately five years. I think about nineteen, between 1930 and 1935, that was created. When the Grand Canyon Sheep Company consolidated with the Triple V Livestock Company, they formed Arizona Livestock Company. And they operated what was known as Valley Ranch from 1930 to 1940. But the Arizona Livestock Company subsequently went under. And that ranch was split. And I think now is into the Blair property, as, as Mike had discussed previously. The name Valley first appears on the, first appeared on maps in 1948. And that was a reference to the railroad siding. And again, not to the community that, that is at the junction of 180 and, and Highway 64. The first reference in the geographic, the, the federal database to Valley wasn't until 1980. And that's, that was the first appearance. That was the first reference of this community on official maps at Two Valley. And again, the association of the railroad siding to this community is unclear at this point. And, and I've done some research. I've looked the, the Valley Plan. I've, I've, we've, you know, asked some of those old timers who have been around the area to, the, the individuals at the Grand Canyon Junction Coalition have, have done their research too. And, and nobody can really come up with any good support really tying the community to that railroad siding that, that is several miles away.
Well, thank you. I'm actually, I was a resident that wrote that in the chat that wanted to know the history. So I appreciate that you've been able to say that. I wanted to make sure that I got that question answered for the public who's tuning in here. Any other questions at this time?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Just to, to comment on this. You know, it should be noted that, what's that? Looks like you have 12 square miles that are outlined in this. This is an unincorporated area, so it's not really an incorporated community. It's giving a name to a, a general zone that falls within those 12 square miles. In terms of, you know, I can see the desire to make, call it Grand Canyon Junction. It is, uh, it's, it's gone through its ups and downs in terms of proposals for subdivisions out there. I, again, I don't have a dog in the fight. I just would note that it's an unincorporated area. It's not a, an incorporated area. I could see that you brought forward support from the, uh, City of Tucson associated with that, which would have been one of the communities that would have had a challenge if they were concerned related to this. With that, it's kind of, we, we went through this down in Blue Ridge, although I don't think we made a geographic name change as formal. Blue Ridge Fire Department was named off of Highway 87. And suddenly, the one-third of the people that all called it the Blue Ridge area, suddenly everybody was calling it that. So they're my observations, Madam Chair. Looks like they're showing numbers on it. That's all I have to say, I guess.
Okay, thank you. And then the, and of the 800 comments, are, do you know how many of them are basically like of people who live in the area?
Yeah, and that's a great question. And there are some statistics that are provided in that background information and that information that was sent yesterday. It's, it is approximately about half of the respondents identified as living within this area. And half were outside of the area. To find the, the exact, it's, it's either other or out of town. And then the individuals within the area had, they further gave their location as either Williams Woodland Ranch, Valley, Tucson, Red Lake, Junipine Estates, the Grand Canyon subdivision, Grand Canyon Ranches. There were some respondents who identified Grand Canyon National Park as their location, as their residence, Four Hills Ranch and Clear Air Estates. So the, and like I said, approximately half of the respondents, survey respondents identified as, as one of those locations as, as their residence. And then the other half of the respondents identified either other or out of town as their location.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead. Vice Chair Fowler?
Yes, I'm just wondering what your next steps are after the board takes action. And what is the timeline on you, on this process, in this process?
Thanks for the question, Ms. Fowler. The next step in the process is to file an application for a name change with the United States Geog, Geology, Geos, Geological Survey, the USGS. They have a, a federal board geographic names board that we would have to petition to have the name change become official with them. So it, it's an application process. We would submit that application, it's hopefully by, before the end of the year. And they, that, that board meets quarterly. And we would hopefully get in front of that board sometime first quarter next year. And they would consider the application. And if they approve it, then the name change would become official on all federal documents. It would be uniform throughout all federal agencies. And it's our understanding that once that happens, the, the state would then follow suit.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Just a, just a comment. Yeah, so very supportive of this. This, you know, started coming forward, you know, a bunch of years ago, a number of years ago in just conversations. So I'm glad to see it hitting the finish line, at least from the county's perspective. And, you know, I just want to remind the board, many of the changes, you know, the soon, this, the hopefully soon to be Grand Canyon Junction, you know, has a mixed story going on right now. There's some incredible opportunities. We've seen new businesses come in. We've done some work with Under, Under Canvas, which is a glamping outfit up there, commercial endeavor. We've seen some, you know, new investments which are really positive up there. We've also seen the challenges in the general area around unmanaged and unregulated and unpermitted, you know, small residential structures that are, that are really taxing sheriff and law enforcement and community character. So I do think there are, there's a good reason to, to, to kind of support the community and moving forward to, to try and solidify its place. And I think that may actually have some positive implications for not only their, the commercial side of things, but also on the challenging side. So I'm super supportive of this effort and will be glad in my last couple of months that this makes it over the finish line, I hope.
Great, thank you. All right, any further questions? Okay, so my only comment is, I mean, I, I do think, I do see the, the practical application of this and really wanting to create a sense of place. And I think it's, it is, it is important. And there were several, appreciated many of the comments. My only concern was just wondering if the name, like Vaia, had any historical reference to, for example, some of the Basque sheep herders and, and in that place. And if there was some, you know, strong history there that we would be denying. And especially since we have a great commitment to diversity and wanting to make sure that diversity is represented and culture is represented in places and especially in recounting history. But I am not hearing that. And I guess just for the record, Mr. Mungini or Mr. Schott, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding that correctly for the record.
For the, for the record, you are correct, Madam Chair.
Okay, super. Well, great, thank you. Then I think we're prepared to go forth with the motion. Supervisor Babett, would you like to do that?
Sure, thank you, Madam Chair. I move that we approve Resolution 2020-71 expressing support of the remaining renaming of unincorporated area at the junction of State Route 64 and Highway 180 from Valley to Grand Canyon Junction.
Great, is there a second?
Madam Chair, I'll go ahead and second the motion. This is Supervisor Ryan, for those on the phone.
Thank you very much. The motion was made by Supervisor Babett, seconded by Supervisor Ryan. There's no further discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, please say nay.
I'm sorry, I'm an aye.
Thank you. Those opposed, please say nay. Hearing not opposed, passes unanimously. And good luck.
Madam Chair, Supervisors, thank you.
Thank you very much. Keep us posted as to how the process is going.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. Thank you for your time. We are now going to go on to item number 11. This is a public hearing. And what will happen first is I will ask staff, which will be Clerk Lindsay Daly, to present this item. This is a liquor license item. And then I will ask for the applicant for the liquor license to speak. And then at that time, I will, after questions from the board, I will see if there's any, if there are any comments from the public. So let me turn it over first to Clerk Daly to present this item.
Thank you, Chair Tcholletta. We received the application from the state for a Series 6 bar liquor license. And this is for Baracho Saloon, which is located at 60 West Pinewood Boulevard in Mans Park for applicant Craig Miller. We did put the posting up for 20 days. We sent it to the various departments for review, including the Sheriff's Office, Community Development, Risk Manager, and Health Department. They did not have concern with the application. We did have an anonymous phone call from a citizen who was concerned mostly of whether the saloon should be open due to COVID concerns. And so our Health Department staff did check with the state. And they do have an attestation form to be open. The board does not issue the license, but does have to make a recommendation to the state on the application. And that can be an accurate, a recommendation for approval, disapproval, or no recommendation to the state. And we do have Lynette Duncan, Duncanson here, as well as Craig Miller tonight.
Thank you very much, Lindsay. Appreciate that. Any questions of Lindsay at this time before I ask the applicant to speak? Okay, well, thank you. Let's see, I would like to see if, um, Mr. Miller, and I'm sorry, the other, oh, Duncanson. If Ms. Duncanson would like to speak to this. If Ms. Duncanson would like to speak to this item.
No, I will let Craig offer any input or address this item.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Miller, would you like to, would you like to add anything to what Lindsey has said?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and Board members. My name is Craig Miller. I work with the Arizona Liquor Industry Consultants. And our clients are the Baracho Saloon, which is, the ownership is an LLC. It's VIP Baracho Holdings. It's located at 60 West Pinewood Boulevard in Mounds Park. There was previously a Series 6 license issued at that location. We handled the application, the following, we met with the couple that are putting in Mr. Thomas Womack and Lynette Duncan, Duncanson. Completed their packet, filed it with the state, requested an interim permit because there was a Series 6 active at that location. During the time it's going through the application process, the applicants paid an extra hundred dollars, requested an interim or temporary license. And that's what they've had there to operate on. As was indicated by Ms. Daly, yes, the, the clients did go to ADHS and request the attestation to open under the yellow conditions. And they've been meeting all those categories, operating as a dine-in facility, social distancing. It's a very small place located in Mounds Park. It's got a small patio and, and the interior is pretty small. If you have any questions, I'd love to answer them for you. It's a person-to-person transfer of the Series 6 location that was already in place.
Thank you very much. Let me see if there are any questions at this time for Mr. Miller. Board members, any questions? Okay, I am, I am not hearing any questions at this time. So I am going to open this up to, to the public to indicate if they, there's any member to indicate what they are, what they are feeling and what they want to communicate to the board. So let me ask right now, as I open a public hearing, do we have any member of the public who wishes to speak to this item? Please know you'll have about three minutes to speak to the board. And I'm going to check in the meantime, just our written comment area to see if there's anybody who wishes to speak. I do not see any. And let's see Clerk Daly, have there been any requests to speak through emails through the board email portal?
No, I just checked. There's no, no emails to the board comments.
Okay. And Mr. Peterson, do you see? Do you see where anyone has indicated a desire to speak?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay, then I'm going to close the public hearing and I'm going to bring it back to the board for either questions or if there are none, then a motion.
Madam Chair.
Ryan?
Yeah, Madam Chair, this is in District 3 and everything looks to be in accordance of our reviews that we, we use to process this and evaluate it. So I'm prepared to make the motion, if you'll allow me. I see you nodding. So, okay, I'll, I move that we approve the recommendation of the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control regarding the application number 120564 for a Series 6 liquor license to Jeffrey Craig Miller for the Baraco Saloon located at 60 West Pinewood Boulevard, Mounds Park, Arizona.
Is there a second?
I'd like to second and amend the motion to correctly pronounce Baracho.
That's what I thought. I was going to do that too, but.
I was using the Rio de flag type of pronunciation.
How did you pronounce? Matt, how did you pronounce the, the town formerly known as Grand Canyon Junction?
The town that shall not be named. All right.
In all seriousness, I second the, I second, I second this to move this on with a recommendation for approval.
Okay, thank you. There's a, there's a motion and a second.
Madam Chair, and, and for the sake of the applicant, it is very serious for what they're applying for. I really appreciate them doing things appropriately, working with the state on the COVID and, and what to do associated with that, but also the appropriate application process for this license as well. And so my comments would be if, if the motion carries, which I suspect it will, that I wish you good luck with it as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. Thank you so much. Well, there is a motion and a second to, to put forth a recommendation of approval to the Arizona Department of Liquor License and Control regarding this application. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed, then this item passes unanimously and we wish you the best for the Baracho Saloon.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Board members.
Thank you.
For the record, to say that I'm an aye, I was trying to get to.
Yes. Thank you very much Supervisor Fowler. I have down that it's a unanimous approval. Okay, so now that actually concludes our special session. We will in five minutes be convening our regular session. So at this time, we do have a five-minute break before we convene our regular session. Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Good luck. Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Supervisors' regular session. I'd like to call our meeting to order. And want to acknowledge the board members that are present at this meeting where we are using technology to conduct our meeting. I'm Lizar Chalata. I'm the Chairwoman of the Board of Supervisors and I represent District 2. We have Vice Chair Lena Fowler and also from District 5.
I'm here, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And then we have from District 1 Supervisor Art Babett.
I am here. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have from District 3 Supervisor Matt Ryan. We might need to unmute Supervisor Ryan. I see him. So I don't know if we need to do something to assist with that technology.
He may not be in front of his computer yet, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. But I'm going to call on him in just a bit. And then Supervisor Jim Parks from District 4. Okay, and I don't think, I don't see Supervisor Parks yet. Oh, okay. I just got a message that Supervisor Ryan is returning to his office. And I think probably the same with Supervisor Parks. Supervisor Parks, are you on yet? Thank you. Okay, we'll just wait a couple of minutes. I just want to make sure that we have all of our board members present. We just finished a special session today that started at 5:00. And so we had a brief break to get some water and to stretch just a bit. So give us just a couple of minutes, please. Okay, great. Thank you. Supervisor Parks, are you on?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Thank you. Welcome. Supervisor Ryan, are you on? Okay, I'm going to. Oh, super. Okay, I was just gonna, I was just gonna see if someone could call to see if you're having some technology issues. So wonderful. Thank you Supervisor Ryan. Okay, the entire board is present. And now I would like to ask you to please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, those who are able, if you would please stand and do that. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We are now going to go to the call to the public. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the Board of Supervisors. This is an opportunity to do so for an item that is not on the agenda. Please know we will not be able to discuss the item because it's not on the agenda. But we are happy to hear what you would like to say to us. And so you have about three minutes to address the board about an item that is not on the agenda. And let me turn it over to Mr. Peterson, who's our Public Affairs Director, to let you know how you would indicate that you wish to speak. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Eric Peterson, Public Affairs Director, welcome to the members of the public with us. If you wish to speak tonight, simply raise your hand. You'll find that on the bottom of the screen for your Zoom function. Or type in the Q and A function, just your name and a comment that you wish to make and we'll call on you during the call to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. I understand we did have one member of the public who had indicated that she did want to speak to the board. You do not have to indicate prior or in advance. You can just let us know now. But I know that one person did say that she wanted to address the board. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the Board of Supervisors? Okay, can any member of the board, excuse me, any member of the public who wishes to address the board during this call to the public? address the board during this call to the public? Okay, well, don't see that there was a member of the public who did want to speak to the board tonight and the subject was requesting, to request an extension of the Donnie Park Timberline Fernwood Area Plan Survey. And so the member of the public just wanted to request that.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Hi, Madam Chair, it's Jay. I did speak with Ms. Chadwick today, she called me as well. And she is going to actually call in Thursday evening for the Donnie Park area plan so she can speak with the committee to make that request.
Wonderful, great, and that is the most appropriate place to do that since we do have a a committee that is driving that process and it's a committee of area residents who are driving their area plan and what they wish to see for the next ten, twenty years of the area. So thank you for directing her to do that. I think that is the best place for her to be able to speak to that and certainly if she is, if she does not do that, Jay, if you would communicate that or I can communicate that as well to the committee on Thursday.
Madam Chair, I sure will, and we put her in touch with Melissa Shaw as well.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I don't see any other member of the public that has indicated they wish to speak, so I'm gonna close the call to the public and I will go on to our next agenda item. And that agenda item is item number twelve. This is a public hearing, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance and I will not go into the detail because I know we have Director Jay Christelman who will speak to the particular item and will let us know just what the request is. So Director Christelman, if you would please give us the detail of this public hearing, including the the change in zoning that is requested, etc.
Madam Chair, yes, I'm trying to share my screen right now. Can you see it?
We can see it, yes.
Excellent, thank you. So as you stated, we are here this evening to go over the Himmels Zone Change, which is ZC twenty dash zero zero nine. When you start the slideshow here. So the owner is Mr. Craig Himmels from Flagstaff, he is on with us this evening, as is Tony Cullum and Guy Ecklin with Cullum Law Offices. The location is fifty-six eighty Brayside Road, the current zoning is G, which is general a ten acre minimum and the parcel is just under ten and a half acres. Now, the request is for G, general ten acre minimum, to RR five, which is a five acre minimum zone. Here is the vicinity map. You can see that the majority of the parcels that are owed to the, to the west there are RR three, you can see the recently acquired open space parcel and then you can see the Naval Observatory down to the southeast of the subject parcel. Here's our aerial photo, you can see that there is an existing home with a garage and shop on the very southwest corner of this ten acre parcel. Now, the Urban Wildlife Planner Jessica Simmons, she did indicate that this is highly, they're both highly, there's a wildlife corridor as you can see here in the shaded area and Mr. Himmels' property is kind of right in the middle of it. So what the applicant has proposed doing to safeguard that wildlife corridor is to have a approximately one acre building envelope here. You can see in the dash line with the home, again, being the new home being proposed to be on the southwest portion of this five point two acre lot that would be the result of the split, or excuse me, of the rezone. Now, Dark Sky Compliance, it is within a half mile of the Naval Observatory, we did invite Mary Beth Drusick with the Navy to attend the pre-application meeting. Yeah, it's just a single family dwelling, she did not indicate any concerns with regards to the Naval Observatory. Obviously, the applicant will comply with the Zone One lighting standards. Now, the long range compliance with regards to the comprehensive plan, there are six policies that call for the preservation of wildlife corridors or that call for continued conservation of dark skies. Staff does consider this request to conform to those policies and plans. It actually is also within the city's regional plan. And it is indicated that this is a rural area, so the city's regional plan yes.
Jay?
Yes. Madam Chair?
Jay?
Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Okay, Jay, now I can hear you, can you hear me?
I can.
Yeah, actually, I was hearing both of you, so you know.
So I'm sorry, then perhaps it was just my computer, but I lost audio for, well, I last heard about the Naval Observatory did not have any concerns and then from that point to this point, I didn't have any audio.
Okay, let me back up, I think, just one slide Supervisor, if that's okay.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
Certainly. So yes, you're correct, the Naval Observatory, Ms. Mary Beth Drusick, she attended the pre-app and had no concerns. Obviously, it's just a single family dwelling and the applicant has indicated they will comply with Zone One lighting requirements. So the next, the next slide that I think you may have missed with regards to the comprehensive plan and conformance with that. So there are six policies that call for preservation of wildlife corridors and there are four policies that call for continued conservation of dark skies and staff does believe that this application meets those policies from the comprehensive plan. And this property does fall within the county's adopted city regional plan, which indicates that this is a rural area which supports the zone change request. Any questions before I continue?
Are there any questions at this time?
You'll be talking there.
Okay. Not yet, and so go ahead, Jay.
Great, thank you. So the board must be able to make the findings a fact. The first is that the change is consistent with the goals, objectives and policies of the comp plan and this zoning ordinance. And that the change will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, comfort, convenience and welfare. That the change will not adversely affect the established character of the surrounding neighborhood nor be detrimental to adjacent properties. And the Planning and Zoning Commission was able to make all of the required findings with the, subject to the two conditions, the first is that the applicant record a building envelope, which we showed on a previous slide. The legal description of the building envelope shall be worded such that construction of any improvements, including structures, roads or fences, shall be constructed within the building envelope and not outside of that envelope or anywhere else on the resulting parcel. And that again is to be in conformance with the Urban Wildlife Planner's suggestion to protect the wildlife corridor and that all lighting shall meet the requirements of Section four point three of the zoning ordinance. And with that, I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Jay.
Madam Chair.
Any questions? Yes, go ahead Supervisor Parks.
Jay, I just had one question, could you please clarify for me? The, how this new building is going to fit into the wildlife quarter? I'm not quite sure that I understand. It seems that there are going to be two buildings now on this ten acre parcel. And there's quite a lot of area there around that ten acres for a wildlife corridor. And I assume that the fencing and things like that are going to comply with, with game and fish.
Madam Chair and Supervisor Parks, thank you for that. I brought up the slide that shows what that building envelope will be. So it's one, it's approximately one acre of the five point two that will be created with this parcel. As far as wildlife friendly fencing, that isn't actually a requirement to the zoning ordinance for individual parcels. And there has been no fencing proposed, at least in this application. But the Urban Wildlife Planner felt that, that even with this impact, there would still be ample room to maintain that wildlife corridor and I'll bring up sort of what that looks like at the macro level. So you can see Mr. Himmels' property right here, the wildlife quarter is a pretty large area.
Yeah, I can see.
Yeah, that helped answer questions Supervisor Parks?
Yes, I think so. All I was concerned about basically was the fencing and it doesn't sound like there's going to be any fencing at all, but anyway, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there other questions that members of the board have at this time?
You turn this on, yeah.
Okay. Jay, anything else that you would like to add at this time?
Madam Chair, no, that summarizes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Then I am going to ask if the applicant or the applicant's representatives would like to speak to this item.
Madam Chairman, this is Tony Cullum, can you hear me?
I can, thank you so much. Hello, Mr. Cullum, how are you?
Good, thank you very much for allowing us to speak. I have Craig Hyderman to my right, right here. He's a good looking one and we appreciate being able to speak to the best county in the, in the state of Arizona and the distinguished supervisors, thank you very much.
Welcome.
And I don't think we're gonna take a lot of your time tonight. I think your staff has done an absolutely wonderful job and we thank them very much. Jay Christelman, Zach Schwartz and the entire staff. We've been working with them for quite some time. The Game and Fish, of course, had some questions. In working through the planning and zoning, we actually had planning and zoning folks that met us out there with the Game and Fish as well as the staff and walked the property with us and came up with an excellent plan. We put all these plans, the dark skies ordinance, the game and fish corridors, the game corridors, the building envelopes, the fire department regulations, the wildlife regulations. We put them all into CCNRs for this property that will run forever, it'll be permanent regardless of who owns it. The only additional building will, site will be the actual one acre site that is under a building envelope. All the rest will be wildlife corridors. The, also the P and Z and the staff worked with us with the Naval Observatory. We, we took care of all their questions and put those dark skies ordinances in our CCNRs also to run with the property. So at this point in time, we've received unanimous approval from the Planning and Zoning Commission. We've got approvals from Game and Fish, the Naval Observatory, the Fire Department. By the way, the chief out there really worked well with us and is a good guy to work with. He's actually working with us to even annex the area into his fire department. So this has been a win-win situation pretty much for everyone. There are two major neighbors out there, they both have letters to support in the file and after working it all the way through, we think we have no opposition. We say that with a big smile on our face because after these years, I never guaranteed that. But we appreciate the staff, we appreciate the Planning and Zoning Commission. We think we've answered all the questions, put it all into permanent CCNRs, we'll run the land forever. Supervisor Parks, there will be no fences. And the, the game quarters will, will, will basically survive in perpetuity. So appreciate your ass, allowing us to speak and we're here for any questions if anyone has any.
Thanks, Tony.
Thank you very much. Let me see if there are any questions from board members at this time. Are there any questions for Mr. Cullum at this time? Okay, I don't hear any, so then we will go to the public hearing portion of this meeting. This is a public hearing and so I'd like to open up the public hearing and any member of the public who wishes to speak to this particular item, item number twelve, can do so at this time. I do not see anybody in that's indicated in the chat and writing that they wish to speak nor in the question and answer area. Let me ask Clerk Daly. Clerk Daly, do you see anybody who has indicated they wish to speak by emailing the board?
Thank you, Chair Chalata, we have not received any emails to board comments email.
Okay, thank you. Well, then I'll just announce it again, any member of the public who wishes to speak to this item, please indicate at this time that you would like to do that. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for consideration. Board members, any questions that you may have thought of, we can ask them at this time, or if you're prepared to make a motion, please do so.
Madam Chair, I would defer to District Representative, I believe this is in Supervisor Babbitt's district, or is this in mine? I thought it was in Supervisor Babbitt's district.
Madam Chair and Supervisors, it is in District One Supervisor Babbitt.
Okay.
So I'm trying to get to, there we go, sorry about that, my camera fell off with associated microphone. With that, Madam Chair, I am, let me just pull up the recommended wording of the motion, if you would give me one moment, please.
Sure.
I would move that we approve the ordinance number twenty twenty dash, we approve and adopt ordinance twenty twenty oh nine, approving a zone change from G Zone to Rural Residential Five on a ten point four two acre parcel, as noted in the staff report.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
Madam Chair, I'll second the motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve this item and adopt the associated ordinance?
Madam, Madam Chair.
Yes.
And just noting, and I would assume in the motion, but I can make the findings as noted by staff as well. And just to express my appreciation to the property owners, really understand the intent for the sake of the family, but also understanding the sensitivity of that particular wildlife corridor and, and the dark skies and willing to work with us on that. I want to thank them.
Great, thank you so much Supervisor Ryan. We have a motion and a second for approval and adoption of the ordinance as presented by staff and as noted in our agenda packet. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you for joining us.
Thanks, Tony, thanks, Mr. Ecklin.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item is item number thirteen. This is a public hearing, consideration and possible action to approve Resolution twenty twenty dash seventy-six. Approving a preliminary plat on seven parcels totaling forty point two three acres in Kachina Village, the property is located at the northeast corner of Kachina Village on the west side of I seventeen and north of Tovar Trail and is identified as Assessor's Parcels number one one six dash twelve dash zero zero one A and one one six dash three zero dash zero four eight F, zero four eight G, zero four eight H and zero four eight J. One one six dash five five dash zero six three J and zero six three K. And the board may continue this item to a future date at the request of the applicant, but let's hear about that from our Community Development Director Jay Christelman.
Madam Chair, thank you for that introduction. Supervisors, good evening. The applicant has requested a continuance to a date not yet certain, though it'll likely be after the first of the year. And this is for both items thirteen and fourteen, they're associated. The reason for the request for the continuance is that the commission hearing, the commission directed the applicant's engineers to work with county staff to further analyze the traffic impacts that this proposed development could come with and a resolution has not yet been accomplished, so they So, they have requested a continuance for that reason.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Let me see if there are any questions just about that request for a continuance.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Yeah, Supervisor Ryan?
Yeah, Madam Chair, and I understand staff's recommendation on this, and therefore it would make sense that we not hear this until appropriate time next year. The one point of note on that is if it's moved to next year, there will be a different board hearing this. And so, you know, I'd be willing to make the motion that we continue this to a future date, Madam Chair.
And therefore, a future date, but not a date, not a date certain, then allowing then allowing flexibility or?
Yes, Madam Chair, but, you know, actually, in communication, we've had a lot of feedback from the community as well that want to comment on this. Based on the staff dialogue, the discussion has been probability would be maybe in February. It could potentially happen sooner, but it makes sense with the new board being seated to give time for that board to also come up to speed on our processes. And so, yeah, not to be determined, probability would be sometime shortly after the beginning of the year and probably in February.
Thank you. So, was that a, was that a motion Supervisor Ryan?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second?
Okay, thank you. Motion made by Supervisor Ryan, seconded by Supervisor Babbitt. Any further discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, just for clarification, probably double-checking, Jay was suggesting that that would have been for both items. You know, we'd beg the question, is it necessary that we do the same for item 14, or did we accomplish the goal by doing that?
I don't know. That's a really good question. I mean, I don't mind going through the motion of item 14 if we need to. I guess probably Jay.
Madam Chair, it's not necessary. A motion was not necessary. It's helpful, but there's clearly an acknowledgement of a continuation of items 13 and 14 to a date to be determined, likely after the first of the year.
Okay, great. Well, thank you. We appreciate that. And that's Jimmy Jane, our county manager. Thank you, Manager Jane. We appreciate that. Okay, well, then we have gone through item 13 and 14. We are now going to go into executive session. Is it the advice of our attorney that we go into executive session for item number 15?
Yes, Chair Chalita. It is my recommendation that you do that.
Okay, thank you. And item number 15 would be consideration and possible action regarding counteroffer made by plaintiff's attorney in pending litigation Neon Acquisitions LLC et al. versus Coconino County Tax Valuation Appeal. So, is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved. Second.
Okay. It's been moved by Supervisor Ryan, seconded by Supervisor Babbitt. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed, please say nay. Hearing none opposed passes unanimously. So, what we will need to do is, just for members of the public, so you know, we will be back approximately at 6:50, and maybe longer, however, just so you know. But if you wish to listen to the rest of the meeting, then I would say about 6:50, you can kind of log back on or return to the screen. Thank you very much.
So, I assume we're hopping over to a separate?
You are. You're going to be going over to a Teams meeting if you just.
Okay.
Calendar.
And leave this meeting.
And leave this meeting, please. Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan, there's a link on your calendar.
Yeah, I figured. But just in case. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening. The Board of Supervisors is coming back now after an executive session and we are now going to item number 16. And this is an item that is for discussion and possible action. It is to get an update discussion and possible action regarding Nino County response to the COVID-19 pandemic and continued discussion on the organizational path forward. And I would like to recognize our interim Director of Health and Human Services, Kim Muselman, who will present this item. Kim?
Hi, Madam Chair. This is Marie Peoples. I'm not sure. I thought Kim was on, but she might still be in the city meeting, so.
Okay, great. Would you like to start and then as soon as she joins, we can turn it over to her?
I can. I apologize. Give me one second and I'll pull up the presentation, please.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Oh, I see you're popping on.
Sorry, actually, I'm on and I just need, I've got the most current presentation, Marie. I'll pull it up if you will give me just a second. I apologize. I was.
You've got now your double teaming Boardman Council meeting, so thank you for that.
Yes, so I apologize. Give me one second.
I think we're a lot quicker than anybody expected for the executive session. So I mean, you know, when you know it, when you think we're going to be long, we're not and the other way around.
Yeah, I apologize.
It's all good, Kim.
Okay. Are you seeing my, the presentation?
So I'm seeing the entire screen, like your files as well as the presentation. But I think if you just enlarge it, it should work.
Here we go. I think this is the PowerPoint I wanted to show. How about now?
Yes, yeah, great.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, hang on one second.
Okay, can you all hear me now?
We can. We can hear you clearly.
Perfect. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Wanted to provide a brief COVID update just with some of the numbers and information. Much of this I know you look at. This is from our last weekly report, but I also have some current numbers as of today. You will see on here the weekly case counts in our weekly report ending October 31st, where we had 288 confirmed cases and we're at a 200.7% positivity rate. Just wanted to point out the week, this most current week just ended on Saturday. And as of tonight, we were already at 515 total confirmed cases for week ending November 7th. Clearly, the most highest week since the pandemic began. Certainly, those other numbers just are cumulative with respect to a total of 5,939 to date of confirmed and probable cases. And I won't break out each of them, but obviously, the case counts continue to go up. As of our report this last week, we were at a.
So, so that is a record high then?
Yes, when, and that's currently at 515 as of today. By the time we actually pull the data, because more cases continue to get added based on the date of the test that come into us. And so it's very likely that that could end up even higher than the 515 that I'm reporting now, but that, that report will be pulled for Friday's report.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. So our current incident rate, as I was saying, was at 200.7 per 100,000. That puts us at a percent positivity of 6.4% again for week ending October 31st and a COVID-like illness incidence of 2.7%. So in those benchmarks, you can see that we have one in each category where we have the COVID-like illness is at the less than 5%. Our case positivity rate is in the moderate. And then, of course, our cases per 100,000 are well over the 100 and currently at the 200.7. Wanted to just provide the board with a few little updates here regarding the holidays. Tomorrow, as you know, is Veterans Day, so the testing site will be closed, resuming on Thursday. The, for the Thanksgiving holiday, as far as the daily and weekly reports, we just wanted to share with the board so that you're aware of this. And then we will be messaging this to the public as well that over the Thanksgiving holiday, the daily data will be polled on Wednesday, November 25th, and it is still going to be posted on Thanksgiving Day on the, on social media. The, and then there will be a break from Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and then the daily data will be posted again beginning Monday, November 30th. As I had indicated at the last board meeting, the testing site is going to be closed Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday over Thanksgiving, over that Thanksgiving holiday of the 26th through the 29th and testing resuming on the 30th. The weekly report schedule for our weekly reports that I was just referring to, the data is going to be pulled on a regular schedule and the weekly report and the schools report will be published on Monday, November 30th, following the holiday. So instead of publishing on Friday, it will publish on that Monday. And just also wanted to provide you a quick little update regarding status of numbers at Hotel Two. Our current guest count as of tonight is at nine, in nine rooms, six are positive and our running total with Flagstaff Shelter Services is 315 bed nights through with November, a total of 81 in November. Real quickly, the testing by week graph that's in the weekly report, just reflecting that the continued high volume of testing that we're doing between what we're doing at the county level is, and also NAU at the Fieldhouse operation. So lots of testing continues throughout the county. And with that, I wanted to share some of the upcoming events. We are going to be in Page on November 12th later this week from 9:00 AM to 1:00. Canyonlands is going to be providing nasal pharyngeal swabs. ASU is going to be providing saliva testing and Health and Human Services will be providing flu vaccines. So we're excited to be back up there this week. We are scheduled to be in Fredonia on November 19th from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The location is still being determined. Health and Human Services is going to be offering both COVID nasal pharyngeal swabs and flu vaccines. And then we also have future events planned for Williams on November 24th. Time and location to come in the coming week or so and on, in Tucson on December 3rd. Quick update by way of Fort Tuthill specimen collections. We have had, our logistics teams have made sure that we have heaters and the tents have been installed and staff are prepared for ongoing snow and winter operations and wanted to give a quick update. As of today, we had a great meeting with ASU and their specimen collection partnership. They have confirmed with us today that they are in position to continue through the end of March 2020. So after the Thanksgiving holiday, they will be, we will all be back on November 30th, resuming testing and continue to do so throughout and into the next year.
I'll just say wonderful. Great.
Yeah, no, that was great news today to, to get that really nailed down. So we're excited. Lastly, just wanted to cover some funding updates. The Arizona Department of Housing is going to be awarding an additional $75,000 in rental assistance next week to the Board of Supervisors to approve. We'll be getting that on a future agenda. The Department of Economic Security is going to be issuing an additional $50,000 in lie heap assistance to Coquandino County. So this is great news in terms of additional funding to help support our residents who are struggling with rent and certainly other utilities related to heat and other things as it's getting very cold. We did get notice yesterday that the, I think it was yesterday, that FEMA Region Nine, we finally got notice that our previous two non-congregate sheltering extension requests under FEMA Public Assistance have been approved. That takes us through November 17th, which of course is next, next week, right around the corner. It does cover both our fifth and sixth extension requests for those 30-day periods and through September 19th through October 18th and then the October 19th through November 15th. The last little piece I'd like to share with you all is just.
Oh, please, yes, go ahead Supervisor, Vice Chair Fowler.
Yes, this is Supervisor Lena Fowler. Kim, I do have a question on the rental assistance. How many, again, have we approved and how many have we denied and why do we deny them?
So Supervisor Fowler, thank you for that question. I don't have the number that we've approved right in front of me right now. I can absolutely get you that. Most of the, and I have the most current report that I'm happy to send out regarding pending applications. Very few are we denying as long as they're meeting the qualifications. We do have a lot of pending applications, which a lot of that is people getting the documentation together or determining whether or not they want to continue in the process. But I'm, I apologize. I don't have that right at my fingertips, but I'm happy to get that sent out to you at the conclusion of this meeting.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead Supervisor Babbitt.
Assuming Vice Chair has finished, a quick question. Is this CARES funding that's passed through? Is this the original bucket of CARES funding that's passing through for the lie heap or these different buckets from the state?
I believe these are different buckets from the state. But again, and I apologize Supervisor Babbitt, that I, I would need to confirm that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, go ahead, Kim.
So the last thing that I wanted to just provide a really brief update as it is kind of late breaking and I was delayed getting on this meeting because I was on the city council meeting. As Michelle Axlin was presenting to the council, we had put in a request for $200,000 in support of our hotel operations from the CDBG COVID funds that the council is allocating. And at the close of that meeting, despite Michelle doing a fantastic job explaining our situation and what the money would go to, it was, it is looking very much like the council is opposed to giving the county any of that funding towards our hotel operations as there seems to be some thought that the responsibility is entirely public health and that the public health funds should be paying for the hotel-related operations for the Tier One facility. So this is really concerning. Certainly something that I hope to have some additional conversations with the manager's office as well as hopefully the board. office as well as hopefully the board, and maybe looking at what our alternatives are as this has continued to be a significant financial burden to the county regardless of our actions and ability to receive partial reimbursement. So I just wanted to let you know that. The board, the council did not vote on it tonight, although the council was very clear where their position was lying, but they did defer to next week to get some additional information from city staff. I know that after that meeting concluded, city staff was reaching out to Michelle, and so we are going to be putting together some additional information and hopefully be able to advocate a little further or look at what our alternatives are. So just wanted to share that with the board. And with that, that's all I have, but happy to entertain any other questions.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions from the board? Okay, well, we appreciate Supervisor Babbitt.
Well, I just wanted to, to pass on something that really does get talked about a lot in the circles that I communicate with, and it relates to the testing graph, the number of tests that we are doing. And, you know, there was a lot of conversation, you know, over these last many months about can you kind of trust the data? And those are reasonable conversations to have, and the data is imperfect as a baseline, but because there's uncertainty, and there's timing delays, and there's different reporting. But one of the things that is so important that I talk about is the level of testing we are doing as a county and with NAU is, you know, well within that benchmark of, of what is really high proficiency, gets that one to two to 3% of the county's publicly basis. We're hitting that, and it's just something that really takes an incredible amount of effort to hit the mark, but also really helps us understand the trajectory of this. So I just wanted to share that with you. A lot of people really appreciate it. Kim educated to me, educated me and Marie on like what that benchmark is, that one to 2% of the county's population on a weekly basis, and we hit it week in and week out for these last five or six weeks over for around 4,000 tests per week. So I just wanted to recognize all the work that goes on to make that happen. And I did finally get tested a week or so ago, and it was just amazingly smooth.
Thank you Supervisor Babbitt, appreciate that.
Yes, Vice Chair Fowler.
So, Kim, our numbers though, does not include numbers from, from Tubus City Regional Healthcare Corporation where some of our, our citizens live, our residents in our county, and that, that is not included in our report. Is that right?
Actually Supervisor Fowler, thank you for that question. Yes, all of the positive results from tribal nations within Coconino County are included in our numbers. So that does absolutely include Tubus City.
Okay, and then our numbers, a follow-up, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Our numbers in reporting the number of testing that we have conducted, is that in the numbers as well?
Supervisor Fowler, if I can just clarify the question you're asking, in terms of all the testing that is being done on the Navajo Nation, is that your question? Is that in, is your, excuse me, is your question that are all of the testing numbers that are being completed on the Navajo Nation, is that included in our total testing number? Is that your question?
Yes, just, just from our county.
We only get information related to total tests if each entity is submitting that information through the state. And so I do not believe that we get all of the total testing numbers from the Navajo Nation, Coconino County, part of the Navajo Nation, that is included in our total number. I will double check with our EPI team, but I do not think we get all of those numbers. So to that point, and to Supervisor Babbitt's point, there, it is very likely there could be even additional testing, negative tests, that test results, that we may or may not be getting a full picture of that. But I'm going to double check on that because I do think it's ultimately about where, which entities are reporting and how they're reporting through the state.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead Supervisor Parks.
I'm sorry, did I cut you off Lena?
Thank you. Hey, it's great to see you.
I'm sorry, I did not understand.
Oh, no, I said, she said, no, she said she was finished, and so it's good to see you. So go ahead Supervisor Parks.
Thank you Lena, good to hear from you too. I was wondering, because we have a lot of our county residents that utilize the IHS Winslow location and are tested there, are we getting that information as well?
Thank you Supervisor Parks for that question. We are, if they are giving their address as a Coconino County address when they are being tested, we receive those results. So as long as they're giving their Coconino County zip code and address, then those results do get reported to us.
Okay, great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Other questions? Okay, well, thank you, and thank you for the information on the, on the city of Flagstaff and their consideration. I look forward to continued discussions before they vote next week. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, well, we're now going to move on to our legislative items, and I'll turn it over to Eric Peterson, Director of Public Affairs. Mr. Peterson?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members. Eric Peterson, Public Affairs Director, glad to be with you tonight. I will keep it short, just give you a couple of updates. First, I hope you have appreciated and find the election reports helpful. As we come through the canvases next week, as the final votes are counted, we will prepare sort of a side by side of where all the offices were this past year and past term to where they are going for you, so to give a sense of the political landscape that we see. There are changes, of course, in county seats as well. So a lot of your colleagues and differences, I just want to make you aware. I think all of you have saw this. But obviously, as a county, we, along with the other medium counties, had talked about the next leadership progression line at CSA. Supervisor Garrison from Yavapai County is behind in his race and is highly unlikely to recover the gap with the amount of votes they have left in the county to count in Yavapai, which is very small. So with that, we will need to readjust as the medium caucus, of which we are a member, on who we will be putting into the CSA leadership pipeline. I'll certainly let Mr. Ryan speak to that and others, but I just wanted to make you aware of that is a change that will need at the CSA meeting in a week and a half, your, your attention on the 19th. Also, in the world of CSA, we are starting on Friday morning, a very initial conversation, sort of a primer for managers, which the county manager and I will both be on, on redistricting. CSA is presenting that, and obviously, the Independent Redistricting Commission is being, has been appointed, the partisan members, the independent chair has not yet been elected, but that process we are watching, and then of course, our process at the county for redistricting of the supervisors' districts in the next term. There obviously is not a lot of state action. I do want to make you aware, we are going to experience a whole, a very hopeful win next week in the United States Senate. The Energy and Natural Resources Committee just notified me literally tonight, as we're on this meeting, that they will be moving the Sunset Crater Boundary Adjustment Act that we have advocated for. It will be up for hearing in the Public Lands Committee next Wednesday at 2:30. So that is a very good piece of movement, you know, hopefully to use this Congress to finish out that piece of legislation, and so that can be cleared off the table. Of course, we have endorsed that bill, and it is pending. Also, the National Defense Reauthorization Act is up for conference. It will get worked out. The House and the Senate both have the Camp Navajo Transfer Language, the land transfer language, and that, excuse me, that transfer will be in the final version that will ultimately go to the president for signature by this Congress, but we, we're not sure if it's going to be the House or Senate version. Bob and I are tracking that down and taking a look at things, seeing where the big four are at on those negotiations. A conference committee has not yet been named on that bill, which means the leaders are doing a lot of the haggling over which pieces will be in the bill. We will have the Camp Navajo Transfer in the bill. The question is again, which version? And we are working with the state to find what is their preferred version as well. I know Mr. Ryan has paid close attention to that, and it's a big economic development priority. What we do not know is the potential for a COVID relief package here in the lame duck. We have heard indications, you know, Majority Leader McConnell said he would like to see a package, you know, while in this Congress. That was before a lot of the election sort of came about as it did. That was almost immediately after the election. Now that may have changed, and there is real doubt that we are going to see a final package in that way. However, the government may, will need to reauthorize its appropriations to avoid shutdowns. So there will be those larger negotiations through December as well. All of that to say, all the election things aside, there is still plenty of work to do over November and December on the federal issues. We again are preparing the state legislative roundtable for December 16th, going to stick with that date. Seems to work out for our legislators elected, six and seven, and then also will be prepared for a federal legislative or federal congressional agenda, and for those independent calls with the members in January, and also working to set up time with Senator-elect Kelly to discuss issues as he comes into office early. That transition is expected on November 30th, once the canvases are complete and he is certified that right after Thanksgiving, Senator-elect Kelly would take office, and Senator McSally would step down. So Madam Chair, I'm going to stop there and answer any questions and provide any insight that folks have.
Thank you very much. Eric, are there any questions at this time?
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead Supervisor Babbitt.
I have a question, just a comment. And so to answer, as a loser in the elections, I don't find your election reports either fun or enjoyable to read.
Thank you. I just, I don't count books in this matter at least, so.
Funny. All right, well, thank you very much. We appreciate the information. And yes, you're, and I just want to acknowledge just the work that your team has been doing. It's a lot of processing of information and preparing the reports, and we appreciate it very much. It certainly has been a very busy time, and so that has not gone unrecognized. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, next is County Manager Jane.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Eric, you're, we do appreciate your reports. We don't appreciate all the information, but we appreciate.
I like this.
So I have spoke to you all about the, the downtown visiting process that the FDBA has been going through recently. There is a draft report that's due out soon. They are having a special meeting to review the report again before it's released, that Mr. Peterson will be attending Thursday afternoon, and then we expect it out in the next few weeks after that. And then we'll be presenting that to the board and sharing it with all of you, as we've discussed previously. But it does have some new innovative look at what downtown is, especially use of public spaces. COVID has also modified that report, where you see the, you know, the, the outdoor space that they did on Aspen across from Heritage Square. Things like that are going to be something that is part, more part of the ethic of downtown. And I did share a report a couple of weeks with you, a couple of weeks ago with you all, kind of give you some highlights of what they're looking at, including enhanced use of Heritage Square itself. So I think COVID has changed some, has changed many things in our lives, but I think the use of downtown space is one of those things that is going to look different moving forward. And Eric, thanks for attending that meeting Thursday afternoon for me. I will not be at the, at the special FDBA board meeting because we do have employee recognition on Thursday afternoon that I will be attending. So if any of you are able to attend with me, but that's Thursday afternoon, it starts at 2:00 or 2:30. Again, will be a virtual recognition. The ones we've done virtually recently have gone great, so I'm excited about, about that. Our next board meeting is the 17th, a week from today, starting at 10:00 AM. A couple highlights of that meeting, speaking of elections, County Recorder Hanson is going to give a brief presentation, kind of give an update on turnout and, and the general election. Again, the board will be considering the canvas at that election, and County Recorder Hanson has confirmed that she will be, her team will be, will be ready for doing the canvas next Thursday, next Tuesday, excuse me, the 17th. Treasurer Benatar is going to come to give a treasurer's updates, economic update to, to the board and share some additional information that she has about local, state, and the national economy. Director Nemeth and her team will be coming back to the board with discussion and a proposal on the Amphitheater RFP that was discussed with the board recently. They have put together, and thank you Lucinda DiCia-Mandriani for working with Director Nemeth and that team in getting that put together for consideration by this board. DCM Keane has worked with Director Fowler and the IT team to give a, kind of a, talk about rural broadband and feasibility study. I know after today's events, I know that Vice Chair Fowler probably has great interest, and she always has, in that, in that conversation. But again, to continue the broadband conversation that this county has been intimately involved in over the time, but obviously, this is becoming an issue that is even more important today than it has been. And then obviously, we'll have COVID and roundtable again for next Tuesday, the 17th.
County Manager Jane, just a, just a, a couple of points. For Treasurer Benatar's presentation, do you know if that's going to include an update on taxes collective, like percentage-wise in this most recent round?
Chair Archuleta, I will confirm that with her. I don't know that for sure. I know that has been the topic of her and I's conversation, that they, she would be including that. I am meeting with her on Thursday, but I will reach out to her in the meantime and make sure that that is included. That was the intent.
Yeah, and then what else? That would be of interest to me as well as if she has some numbers regarding utilization of the drive-up window to pay taxes specifically. So not, of course, you know, not, not just utilization of the window for, for whatever, but for, but specifically for tax collection, and then it would just be great, and I don't know if Recorder Hanson would have this as well, but just any kind of information regarding like the utilization of the, the drop-off sites, you know, on the Navajo Nation, as well as utilization of the, of the actual drop-off boxes throughout Coconino County would be great. And then also just utilization of the drive-through window would be, would be really helpful. I mean, obviously, we have, we had some, you know, we conducted elections, you know, making them accessible in a number of different ways, and it would just be good to get, to get that information.
I'd be happy to confirm that with them, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. Probably the mall utilization, you know, just different sites would be great. Or members, anything for the next, for the next, any comments regarding the next board meeting, items that County Manager Jane went over?
Madam Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So Jimmy, in, is any in, update on timing? Because I believe the 17th, one item has come off potentially, and if I missed you saying that, and I'm not sure, the one right before the Amphitheater RFP may not be on the horse. And I'm just wondering about timing, if there are changes. I do have had people asking me about the Amphitheater RFP, just wondering if you can let us know on the timing as soon as you can, so we can get that out. That'd be super appreciated.
Madam Chair, I'd be happy to address that. So you did receive an email from DC to confirm So you did receive an email from DC to confirming that the horse racing is coming off at request of TERF. So that's their request. They are not ready, timing of it is outlined in the brief correspondence that we received. Mr. Babbitt, in answer to your question, we have the amphitheater RFP will be on at 1:15.
Okay.
So we wanted to do a time certain to give folks an opportunity to participate, so it will be at 1:15.
Great, thank you very much.
Okay, anything else about next week's board meeting? Okay, go ahead Jimmy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a reminder for supervisors and supervisors-elect, orientation is scheduled for Thursday, December 3rd, from nine to four. Still working through, you know, utilization of the boardroom virtually, but the team is working to put that together again for Thursday, December 3rd, from nine to four for supervisors and supervisors-elect. And then the following Thursday, the 10th, we are still planning for supervisors and supervisors-elect presentation by departments. We will not get to be able to get through every department on the 10th, but the intention is to give a more in-depth briefing regarding departments, department functions, and to introduce especially the supervisors-elect to some of our key department leaders and team members across the organization. We are considering and contemplating doing a specific justice-related orientation to, for, for the board and potentially the board members-elect, depending on if it happens in December or January, to have that more roundtable conversation with our justice-related departments to make sure that we fully pull that apart, especially as we're educating and onboarding to new board members to the board. We are in the process of our second round of budget discussions with all of the departments. And so those have started, those are going fantastic, in my opinion, where the budget teams and the appropriate DCM are meeting with the department leadership to talk about, you know, current trends, you know, Siri's giving a mini kind of budget updates, but then also talking about the current status of their budgets, issues that are coming forth that have surfaced that they have, that they know are out there, you know, grant opportunities and things. It's just a great opportunity to have really a robust roundtable conversation throughout 12 months, but also more, now we're moving even more into a, with our second round, a deliberative way of planning for the FY22 budget discussion. We do plan to give a brief budget update to the EOLT a week from tomorrow, which is our next, on the 18th, which is our next EOLT meeting, where we will discuss some more about the budget process, obviously including having budget discussions and presentations by departments to the board in the, you know, the end of April, beginning of May timeframe as we have before. You know, we see it as a great opportunity for departments to be able to tell their stories about the awesome work that they're doing throughout our organization and our communities throughout Coconino County, you know, to serve people and to serve those communities. But we, the, the vision is that we're able to also help better prepare for those budget discussions with the board by having these, you know, consistent kind of individual meetings with the departments and making sure we know where they're at and what they need to help them be successful. But I believe it's, it's working. So Madam Chair, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Jimmy? Okay, great, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, now we'll go to roundtable.
Hey Liz.
And yes, go ahead.
Just one thing during Eric's presentation, I just texted him and asked him if he could speak to the state leadership, because a lot of that's been, they've haggled through a good bit of that.
Good idea.
Madam Chair, thank you very much, members. So in regards to legislative leadership, the House Republicans and Senate Republicans both have met to elect leadership for this coming session, essentially largely unchanged in terms of Speaker and Senate President. Speaker Rusty Bowers was re-elected, easily defeated Mr. Fincham for that role. They also elected Ben Toma-Poria to the House Majority Leader role. Warren Peterson moved to the Senate. Leo Biassucci of Lake Havasu City was elected as the House Majority Whip. And then Bowers has selected Travis Grantham from Gilbert to be the Speaker pro temp. In the Senate, Senator Phan was re-elected Senate President. Rick Gray and Sonny Borelli both re-elected to their leadership positions. The Democrats have not met yet, but the current Democratic leader Charlene Fernandez has announced she will not stand for leadership to the Democratic Caucus. She instead threw her support behind Representative Bolding, Reginald Bolding. And so there is a leadership race of types to work itself out in the Democratic Caucus in the House in the week ahead. The Senate has made no announcement yet on when they will be meeting for their caucuses. Obviously, the LD28, Brophy McGee, Senator Brophy McGee has narrowed her lead, her trailing, excuse me, to just about 600 and some votes, maybe a little more now later with these later announcements. We'll find out and get it in the report, but it's the closest legislative race. And I think Senate Dems are hanging on to see what that outcome will be before they make a leadership decision. But they are expected to pick up that seat with Christine Marsh. So that's that update to answer Mr. Ryan. And Madam Chair, I forgot, just one quick federal announcement if I could.
Go ahead.
Thank you. And I will send this out to all of you, the Trump administration, this is the, the deferred maintenance issue out of the, the large bill that was signed earlier this year. And so the Trump administration has announced its priority targets that are required under the bill to go to Congress. A long list includes both areas here in Arizona, in the, in the Colorado River area under BLM, and then also within the Grand Canyon National Park under the Park Service. So I will send that out to you. I just wanted to make you aware, there are folks who are relatively upset because there's a lot of the money flowing towards state entities and state, state areas rather into than federal areas. This is not the final decision at all. This is just the requirement that the administration provide those targets, you know, to Congress. And so obviously should the administration change, those targets could change along the way. But they did make, make their, make that known to Congress where those targets are. I'll get the list to all of you tonight.
Thank you. Any questions about that? All right, thank you. Now we'll go to roundtable. Supervisor Babbitt, anything you'd like to share?
Putting my cynical observations of our high-performing staff aside, I, no, just do want to really appreciate the organization's work, you know, from manager down to Eric on election and just keeping us super well appraised and, and walking right into the next set of conversations. I do want to say while I'm on this piece that Eric, I think we really need to keep an eye out what the upcoming administration's proposals are for ag and interior leadership. What I saw was folks who were not well steeped in Western issues so far. And that is, you know, it just, it points to maybe a different strategy on how we engage, depending on who comes forward, but they were, they were, I think, quite a few East Coast folks that I saw. And so we just want to keep that really early on our agenda for the upcoming Biden administration, who for the record, I am recognizing as the President-elect of the United States. And so that's that. Couple of local pieces really quick. There's some really forward progress about to be announced on mill capacity in Northern Arizona. We'll let the private sector partners bring that forward, but that's something that's just so great to, to see little bits of progress move forward. I had an opportunity to have a good, long meeting with Patrice Horstman, who's coming in behind me. And we had a great, long, multiple-hour handoff meeting today, and I'm sure there'll be more of those. And it's, just feels great to have someone coming in behind me who knows so many of the issues that faces Coconino County, from public lands issues to a variety of community service organizations. So that's really been good. So I feel super comfortable and confident that at least District One's transition is going to be supportive and, and pretty seamless. So that's really exciting. The last piece I want to ask the board and especially, you know, the three who are going to be staying is NACOG EDC, which I am the elected appointed representative, we, has contemplated, or has opportunities for outside of elected officials to be appointed as private sector representatives. I think Chairwoman Archuleta, you'll know this, that they have kind of different sectors. And so they are going to be looking for the private sector person for Coconino County. I think it may be wise for the board to wait to make those decisions until the new board is seated and talk about new priorities. But there is some discussion on EDC about could there be a role for me who's on the executive committee in that role? I am not asking for it, but I just wanted to bring it up to the board because it is typically the board weighs in on the prioritization of, of who serves, not only electeds, but even some of the appointed folks from private sector. So I just wanted to air that. I'm not asking for anything. I just wanted to bring it to your attention and contemplation for the three of you who are going to be staying with the new board on, on, on how you may want to approach that. And we can, we got tons of time for that conversation. And with that, I've got some for-fry work coming up. That's pretty exciting in terms of my transition out of the board and got some field trips with the district ranger up in the museum fire burn area to hopefully talk about some revegetation opportunities as well and working with some community nonprofits. So still busy and still love getting out and doing the great work that this county does. So appreciate it.
Great, thank you Supervisor Babbitt. Supervisor Ryan? District Three?
There we go, got all the buttons pushed here. All right, well, first and foremost, my gosh, we all somehow come through that election. Bummer art on yours, but really have appreciated working with you over the years. And we have time, we're going to still work till the end of the year. But congratulations to everybody. And I look forward to meeting Judy Bigay. I haven't, I haven't spoken to her. I should reach out to her, but welcome her onboard and Patrice coming onboard. Transition between District Three representative now to the next one might be complicated. So we're, we're working on that and trying to figure out, you know, how to make that transition happen. And then I just have to, you know.
From you to you, you'll have to talk to yourself.
My alter ego, you know? What do you want to do, Matt? Well, I don't know, what do you want to do? And on the serious side of things, I did just have an ARTAC meeting just trying to align on transportation objective. ARTAC, the Rural Transportation Advocacy Council, which is made up of 13 counties, rural counties, MPOs and COGS for transportation. So we're, we're aligning around what our objectives are, keeping an eye on leadership and, you know, hoping for new champions to step forward. Although, you know, watching CSA and what we went through and the recommendations we had with CSA, ARTAC's pretty aligned with the similar objectives. And we also were able to see President Phan and Speaker Bowers comment on the need for investment in infrastructure. How that'll play out is a whole other discussion, but at least the discussion is there. A big piece that obviously we have to watch out for is with the VLT fees going away, that's about $120 million gap. The state already will have a, although things are better, they're still not great. And so we have to watch the HERF monies. And that, that will be a big component of, are they going to rate us for our transportation maintenance money? We certainly don't want to see that rather investment in our infrastructure, which helps our economy and, and helps us maintain our roads for, for many reasons. And then as noted by Eric, Medium County Caucus with Randy getting appointed to move into the executive committee, it does create that vacancy. Robin has reached out to me. I'll, I'll try and reach out to her tomorrow just to put the word out to the medium counties for people that might be considering that possible, filling that possible seat. So that's, that's one we'll need to be setting up with, with County Supervisors Association next week. We're going to have, for the sake of Medium County Caucus, because I am the current chair of that, I'm going to need information on broadband. I'll reach out to CSA and see if they can reach out to some level of expertise, but they were asking if I might be able to bring some of the information that, since we brought it to the agenda of CSA as a primary topic, if we could provide information. So I, you know, I haven't reached out to our own staff in that way. And heads up Jimmy, heads up Eric on that. But there are some of the main pieces. Otherwise, you know, campaigns are very busy. So I just got through a contested campaign, closing that up, transitioning. It's a lot of work right now. And so I'm trying to get my life back in order and start to line up our, you know, desires and objectives for next year. I just look forward to it. It's a new beginning and, you know, today's the beginning of the rest of our lives. We have everything to look forward to if we bring people together, and I think we can. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Ryan. Okay, let's go on to Supervisor Parks, District Four.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I don't have a lot. I just, I spoke with Jerry Sims earlier this evening and about their proposal and the withdrawal of it. And he indicated that TERF will, will be moving to establish a modified proposal after January 1st. And that, that's good news, but it was a, I was a bit sad that I'm not going to be able to be here to help with that or to see it, because I, it's kind of close to my heart. But they're not abandoning the idea of racing here. It's just that they're up against, they're starting of their new season right now. And there is an awful lot of work to be done at Fort Tuthill. And so they, they will, will be moving towards figuring that out in order to get the track in, in shape and the grandstand area and the infrastructure and all of it. They are still interested in Fort Tuthill and racing here, which is to me a positive. I, I know that they are well-established in the racing world. They also may get some help from some other racing facilities to the west of us, and that could help with their overall program, Monarch and, and that outfit. I believe that this is, could be a good thing for Coconino County, could bring in a lot of money to Parks and Rec. I, I look forward to, to them putting on the races here if they can get it pulled together and, and hopefully you all will see the value of it and, in the future and, and bring that to the fore. I appreciate Supervisor Babbitt's views on the, the Secretaries of Interior and Agriculture for the future. Generally speaking, the folks from east of the Mississippi don't really understand our issues here. And so I'm, I'm hopeful that Supervisor Babbitt said, we can, we can, you guys, I won't be here, but you all can, can figure out a way to deal with them to best, best alleviate problems that may occur and utilize their, their input to the, to the best of your abilities. to best alleviate problems that may occur and utilize their input to the best of your abilities. That's about all I have. Thank you very much. Happy Veterans Day on Wednesday and tomorrow. And I'll talk to you next week. Thanks.
Thank you Supervisor Parks. Okay Supervisor Fowler, Vice Chair Fowler, District 5. Supervisor Ryan?
Yeah, can I help you?
Sure, go ahead.
Actually, I should note Jim's work with veterans and want to thank him for all the work that he has done with it. The other piece would be today's the Marine Corps birthday. So December 5, huh? All right. Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Jim.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. And my cousin who was the 34-year Marine celebrates his birthday on the Marine Corps birthday, not on his real birthday.
That's great. Well, happy birthday to him. Supervisor Fowler?
Yes, hi.
Hi.
So I guess my report is internet, internet, internet. You all know I've been having lots of challenges trying to log in and being able to do some work. And so our internet is just spotty. And so we've been working on broadband and I am so happy that our department of our IT and Joanne will be presenting next week and the study is done. And we will continue to be working on broadband and with our region, with all the stakeholders and partners. And then we are still, we had started the birth certificates with Kim and team from the Health Department and our in Tupacity and trying to provide the birth certificate services. But with the numbers going up, we may be having to have to stop that for a while again until we're in a better situation. So outside of that, I just want to congratulate everyone that has won again and really look forward to working with everyone with a new board. Jim and Art, gonna miss you. Thank you for all the work that you've done. And I know you're going to continue working on behalf of the communities. That's just the way you are. And really want to thank you for everything that you have done and you will be doing and will most likely be partnering with you on your future work. So thank you so much. And I want to thank our staff for always updating us on everything that we need to be updated with. So just really appreciate all the election updates that have been coming in from Eric's team. Thank you.
Thank you Vice Chair Fowler. Appreciate it. Okay, well, thank you. I think a couple of things. The Board of Regents, the Arizona Board of Regents is asking for input regarding their presidential search for Northern Arizona University. And they are having a forum on Thursday where they're taking public input. And I have asked our county manager and DCMs if they would put together some, either a letter or some points about the partnerships that we're engaged in with university and how we really would like to have a president that wants to continue those partnerships, build upon the foundation that President Chang and then those presidents before her have built with the county. And so I think it's important that just right at the onset that we speak to the value of the partnerships that the county has with the university. And then of course, any information that would help them in their search in terms of qualities and characteristics that we would be looking for in the next leader of Northern Arizona University. I know that perhaps some of you have been contacted by the search committee. I did have a chance as one member of the board to speak to Fred Duvall and provide just comments from my perspective in terms of the qualities of leadership that are needed in the next president of Northern Arizona University. And so I know that they are really wanting to get as much input as possible. So if you get contacted, great. If not, if you'd like to make contact specifically to speak to Fred individually, please feel free to do so. They are welcoming everyone on the board to provide comments. So that is Thursday and those comments can be delivered either in person or via technology or submitted in writing. I certainly will try to do that on Thursday, either in person or via technology. Secondly, I think I just want to make sure that we all provide input into the process that we will use for installation of the new board. I think we need a plan for both either in-person but also plan for an installation that is going to be done via technology. I mean, we don't know what the COVID numbers will be at that time. Certainly the numbers that we're seeing right now does not provide a hopeful indication that we would have an in-person installation. But certainly there might be a way to do that by rotating, by basically swearing in each board member individually as opposed to having a large group. But obviously the format is going to need to change. But please share your thoughts with Jimmy around that. Share your thoughts with me so that we can make it an installation that is memorable and at the same time making sure that everyone is safe and that we're adhering to social distancing, et cetera. In terms of the orientation for the new board members coming in, again, feel free to please share your comments with County Manager Jane. I know we touched base about this a couple of weeks ago and he asked for feedback and board members provided that. But please continue to do that as the orientation is beginning to take shape. I know that here I will be visiting with you about that. But we certainly want to make sure that we're covering the materials that we need to be covering so that the two new board members will be able to come in and hit the ground running. Lastly, I just want to, again, just convey my appreciation to Supervisor Babbitt and Supervisor Parks on their run for a different office. It takes a lot of work to do that. It takes the aspiration and certainly a lot of commitment and a lot of family and support. And so I just want to thank you both for doing that and looking forward to making sure that the county and all of our team members have the opportunity to thank you for the past four years. And so we'll be working on that as well. And certainly want to welcome our two new board members, Patrice Horstman and Judy Begay. I'm really looking forward to getting to know them. And well, of course, I know Patrice. I'm looking forward to working with them and getting to know Judy and look forward to bringing them in to make sure that they have what they need to get started on January 1st. So with that, I think unless there's anything else, looks like our meeting is adjourned unless there's something else that anybody else would like to say. Any further information? Okay, well then thank you. Happy Veterans Day to everyone. Deep appreciation to our veterans and look forward to seeing everyone next week. Thank you.
Thanks Liz.
Bye-bye.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.